All right, folks, this is May 25, 2023. This is a city council workshop meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
President.
Mayor Protem Montoya.
Here.
Councilman Tenney.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Here.
I'll let the record reflect that Councilman Sishka and Councilmember Bruce sing our excuse from this meeting.
All right, very good. We're going to have this fiscal year '24 budget workshop, part two, and we'll kick this off with our favorite and only Finance Director.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mark Woodfell, Budget and Finance Director, for those of you who don't know me. It's an exciting day. It's part two. You've got to love sequels. The last one was so good, we had to make another. The good news about today is I only have three slides in the whole presentation, so you're going to get to hear from a lot better speakers than me. So let me do my first one. If I get the clicker to work.
Is it on?
It's got to be something. Thank you.
Fonzie.
I think they helped me, the clickers in the sky. So, again, to other general fund departments, we brought this up, and again, this is important, that's why we keep harping on it, that council realize, that the public realize, where does the recurring revenue that the state legislature absolutely feels we shouldn't be collecting get used for? Fire Department, which we're going to hear about, is one of our very big ones. Ninety percent of their whole budget comes from it. You know, as we saw, Public Safety, Fire, and Police, as well as all the Recreation and Library are hugely funded by this. So whenever they talk about cutting residential rental tax or food tax, that's what they're talking about cutting. With that, I will turn it over. Oh, it's working, Chief. You're in good shape. I'll turn it over to the chief.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Holger to Fire Chief. So a couple of things that I do want to just, since the slide is up there, is point out. So first of all, our tribal contract is approximately 3% of our revenue. That does have an inflationary escalator in it, so it does grow as we grow and as our expenses grow. The allocation from the tribe also increases, so I do want to kind of point that out. The other thing is when I talk about the concern that I have about general fund displacement of our capital projects that we've got on our roadmap, this is really what I'm talking about. And of course, I'm not making a policy statement, I'm staying out of that lane, but I just want to make sure that this is a great time for us to talk about that. And speaking of that, let's talk about that strategic plan again. I promised you every time we would talk about money, we would be talking about our newly adopted strategic plan. And these are the five major results that we are in part hoping to accomplish with this fiscal year budget. Just as a reminder, there are measures that are across those that this budget workshop is not going to cover, obviously. We talked about that back in March. But the reason why I put that in there is I want you to know that there's accountability to the dollars that we're asking for. And so we will be measuring progress with the initiatives that we're proposing in this year's budget. And speaking of that, the budget also, as I mentioned in March, has been completely restructured to align with our new strategic plan. There are now four major divisions. They are the Office of the Chief, Operations, which makes some sense, Community Risk Management, and Essential Services. And in those four program areas, we have, or sorry, four divisions, we have 15 program areas that align with the primary purpose of each one of those four divisions. All right, moving right along, here are a refresh of the major full-time equivalent ads that we are requesting in this year's budget. The first and our highest priority is our Operations Chief. In 2008, during the recession, we had to downsize that position, and since then, that has been a duty that has usually been added on to either the Deputy Chief, the Fire Chief, and our Battalion Chief. So we've not had an Operations Chief since that time. This year, we did head of an interim Operations Chief. Chief Lucas was bumped up from his current Battalion Chief role, and that was in part to proof concept, and definitely, we can tell you, and other departments can attest as well, including HR, that we've seen a significant return on that span of control improvement. Our Wildfire Risk Reduction Manager position is part of our Forestry Crew transfer into Rec Services. That position is going to be the primary person for us. That's going to be that link between the Forestry Crew and Rec Services and the Fire Department. But really, the biggest thing I want to make sure that you understand is on June 13th, when I talk to you about fire-adapted communities, this is going to be the position that is going to be the primary actuator from the Fire Department side to make sure that we really take a much more global look in terms of wildfire preparedness, response, and recovery. We've also been asking for an additional administrative position, and that's been actually on our roadmap for quite a while. This department has obviously grown in responsibility. As we mentioned, we now have 368 unique services that were identified in our strategic plan that this department delivers, and in order for us to coordinate the logistics, that requires that overhead. And so we're asking for a fourth administrative position to be added to the three that we currently have. Along with that, we're also working with Human Resources and City Management to do a restructure of our administrative divisions. We've had a lot of single points of failure because of that. You know, you see Jamie Sventek here. She is the fuel behind our budget, and when she takes a vacation, those things stop happening because you don't want me in the backend immunists, I promise you that.
Chief, Mayor Protem has a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Holger, for the benefit of maybe some other folks who aren't aware of it, can you give me some idea of, or give the general public an idea of what the Operations Chief does and how that augments the role of what you and the Deputy Chief do?
Excellent, yeah, thank you for that. That's a great opportunity to discuss a little bit about our operations. So first of all, obviously, the bulk of the Fire Department is emergency operations. It's approximately 85% of our personnel are assigned to the Operations Division. We currently have three Battalion Chiefs that oversee three shifts, A, B, and C shift, to provide 24-hour coverage on the street. That is a position that usually exists in most Fire Departments our size to make sure that those three Battalion Chiefs have the proper span of control. Because it's such a large part of our operation, we have not had the primary focus on that part of what we're doing, which is 85% of what we do. Instead, our Deputy Chief and Fire Marshal has also had the added duty of being the Operations Chief. And you can imagine, first of all, not only is that a workload issue, it's also a span of control issue because that individual is primarily looking at community risk management and strategic department management. And when they have to switch back and forth between operations, it creates a lot of inefficiencies. And so, for instance, a couple of things that we've seen is that the accountability that comes with an Operations Chief has to get deferred into other situations. I'm really going to put it on the spot here because, for instance, purchasing card reconciliation, the accountability mechanism behind that has shifted over to our Business Manager. That's traditionally where an Operations Chief would come in to make sure that people are following those business processes. That's one example, although it seems like a mundane one, but a very important one, where an Operations Chief can help make sure that those three Battalion Chiefs are holding captains accountable, are holding firefighters accountable.
So Chief, I'm wondering if you can, not to harp too much on this, but what efficiencies do you pick up in terms of the role that you and the Deputy Chief are going to be able to focus your energy on more?
So, yes, it's going to get us out of the weeds, basically. That's the best way I can put it. You know, it's going to get us at the strategic level where we need to be. And the other thing it also is going to do is add an additional executive-level thinker to my senior leadership team, which currently didn't have that Operations presence. That helps us significantly at, for instance, being able to implement the strategic plan in an effective manner, and also for us to start pivoting and focusing on things that we're asking to do here. Fire station design and construction. Where are we going to put a fire station? Those are things that currently, we're in the day-to-day, half-to-task level. It's going to get even the Fire Chief from task to tactical to strategy, and that's where I need to be, that's what you pay me to be at.
Right. No, that's excellent. I really appreciate that detail. And even though I had that sense already, the additional detail was very helpful, so I appreciate that.
Good, okay. And then finally, moving on to the Safer Grant Firefighters, those are the additional firefighters that we asked last year when we applied for a grant for eight. You funded, thank you very much, those five, that, by the way, they started Academy just two weeks ago, and they're doing great. But this is, again, exactly in the same vein. It gives us the option to apply for that grant, which we have. We're waiting for, you know, the results of that, which will probably, again, be right around November to February. And then also, there's that option at your disposal if you choose to fund it out of the general fund at a later time, the way that you did in this last budget. And again, that's a conversation I don't want to have here necessarily because that's a much later down-the-road conversation. Just understand, that is in there, and when you look at the full-time equivalency in the Fire Departments, those three Safer Grant firefighter slots are in this fiscal '24 budget. So, questions before I go off personnel?
So Chief, you want to add an Operation Chief? Or is that going to be elevated from within the department? Or is that going to be an additional staffing management position?
So we are working right now, so it'll be an additional FTE, so we're increasing the count by one, okay? Now, where we're going to source that person, that's something that Human Resources and I have to work with City Management to determine what the appropriate ways to fill that, whether we fill it internal or we fill it from external, that's yet to be determined, but it will be an additional person. But I'm glad you brought that up because for the last six to eight months, what we've been doing is since Chief Lucas has been out of his Battalion Chief role and in this Operations Chief role, we've had a temporary fill-up to fill his Battalion Chief spot with a temporary Battalion Chief. The good news for us is, where we're at as an organization, that's great because I've been able to expose people that otherwise wouldn't to those roles. And so from succession planning, we're getting some great exposure, but obviously, that's not a permanent fix. And so when that position gets filled permanently, we'll also have the other promotions that will commensurately fill that, depending on how we decide to go forward.
Does that same explanation apply to this Wildfire Risk Reduction Manager?
No, sir. That is a brand-new position that we are asking for in addition to our current FTE count in the department. Yeah, that's not a bump up, that is a brand, we're working with Human Resources right now, actually, to determine that job description because that is a job description in a class that has not yet existed in the Fire Department.
So that's two additional FTEs, and then this administrative position is...
So that's your, exactly, that's your third additional FTE. That is correct.
Do you like that, Jamie? Yeah.
Mayor, may I ask a question also? When you get a minute.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming here today. You know, this is something I follow very, very carefully. You and I have talked about this, and I keep this with me now that we're campaigning for talking points because one of the things that sticks out in my mind, and I was going to ask you about these, the new recruits coming on, this was the minimum staffing overtime budget of $684,000. How is that going to be impacted with this? I know this can't go away.
Correct.
It will be impacted big time, won't it?
Correct. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up. So first of all, what I want to really emphasize before we talk about the dollars and cents, even though we're at a budget workshop, is because we were so thin-staffed, the amount of mandatory enforced overtime that our personnel have been working over the last couple of years, and even the potential risk for browning out a station, that is really, right now, where we're at. And so, yes, will there be a commensurate decrease in that overtime? Yes. Now, as we mentioned in our budget update, as well as when we talked about the five new firefighters, it is not a linear equation. So it is not to the point where we say, hey, we add one firefighter and we reduce that. Now, where I'd like to see us go with this conversation is so that I can tell you as your SME that there is a direct correlated impact that for X number of firefighters, we should have X number of additional firefighters for filling vacations, sick leave, and injuries, and that beyond that level, it's more economical to fill that with overtime versus a full-time equivalent. Most Fire Departments have that formula ready to go. We're not at a place yet where we've got that. These five firefighters that we added with the six that you approved, that's the beginning of a data analysis study that I'm planning to do to bring that back to all of you to say, okay, now that we can compare before to now, this is where we're at. And so the question you're asking, I hope to have some much more direct answers for you, but we simply, again, don't have the experience because we've been so far behind.
Now, will your data be able to pick up the cost from just sheer exhaustion? Because I know, you know, these guys are running on fumes half the time. Based on this amount of hour allotment for overtime, after they've just come off of these shifts, and then to have to go on and do another shift, this is where the cost and the mistakes happen. Will you be able to collect some of that data? Because I'd be interested in seeing that.
I'm so glad you brought that up. So I'm going to go back just a quick second here. So first of all, when you look at result number three, workforce, investing in the health and safety, career development opportunities, and organizational development, in that result area, we have measures that are specifically tied to employee health and safety, mistakes, errors, injury rates, the length somebody is out and unable to cover the roster, those are the metrics, those are specifically metrics tied to the question that you're asking that are in this new strategic plan. And yes, absolutely, I'm hoping to see a commensurate, probably a, I'm going to say correlated, not causal, effect of some balancing out in that area, yes.
Well, thank you very much. Data is something we sorely need, and I'm so impressed by the data that you've been able to dial and drill into because these are the details that cost so much money. I know of a case where a fireman, again, had done a double shift, stepped down, compound fracture on his ankle, you know, the medical bills were somewhere in the $600,000, $700,000 range, and then the loss of a firefighter for months and months and months. That's a real cost when you start to do some kind of a forensic auditing on where this money is going.
Yeah.
So thank you very much for doing that.
Oh, you bet.
Mayor Protem.
I'm good. He answered my question.
Chief, these potentially six new firefighters will then be covered in PSPRS Tier Three?
The three Safer Grant firefighters, yes. The Operations Chief, yes. The Wildfire Risk Reduction Manager and the additional administrative position.
SRS?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Please proceed.
Yep. All right. I also want to talk a little bit about non-personnel efficiency-related proposals, just to highlight a few things here. First of all, we are in this budget proposing contracted plan review services, I should say continuation of those, and that helps us not have to have a full-time equivalent employee and actually helps us increase the effectiveness and efficiency. And that person's already working with our community development partners to help us with, you know, not adding another FTE, basically, to the book and still have really good outcomes here. Digital document conversion, this might actually turn into the Jamie Sventek budget workshop here because currently, just to give you another part of her experience, is when we get a records request currently, we have to go for fire prevention records, we have to go to three separate places, two electronic databases and a paper database. That's 16 file cabinets of backlog paper that I can save a lot of time if we can convert that digitally and have keyword search capability in that database. That saves us not only time, headaches, but also helps us integrate with the Clerk's Office and make our records request process a little bit more efficient. Cooperative protective gear washing and repair, we are in this budget looking at partnering with our partners at CAFMA who have a full warehouse division that has certified bunker gear repair technicians to help us with that. Currently, we have people doing that, regular firefighters doing it on overtime on their day off. So they'll go to another fire station, pick somebody else's gear up, take it to our Station 51 on Iron Springs, wash it, put it back together, and return it. We can do that a lot more efficiently, basically, at the end of the day, rather than paying that person overtime. Academy Training Captain Backfill, we've talked about green academies with you in the past. We still have not had a green academy, but we're looking at the potential for that. This gives us the option to have a training captain for four weeks, twice a year, be assigned to one of those training academies, again, without hiring an additional full-time equivalent employee. And then finally, we're currently working on a purchasing agreement for system status management software. And what that basically is, is back end on, or in addition to the back end of CAD, to help us with currently what we do, it's called move-ups. So if a hole gets created in the middle of Prescott, we move other engines from around the system to cover that. That's basically done off of a road, you know, not an algorithm, I should say, it's just a road chart, basically, that dispatch has. This is hoping that we're able to reduce those move-ups anywhere between 25% and 40% and at the same time, improve response times. Now, that is an efficiency that I really want to highlight here because the total package between us and Central Arizona, it's going to be 50-50 split, is $120,000 total. And just the fuel savings alone, if you think about us reducing our move-ups by 25% to 40%, that is a cost, to your point, Councilmember Cantelme, that is going to have downstream impacts on our budget in other areas that we can't even see right now. So I just want to highlight those areas. They're buried a little bit further down in the budget, but I think it's important for you all to know.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'm wondering if you can, we talked earlier this year when you were first kind of rolling out your strategic plan about this idea that there were efficiencies you could get by doing more data analysis on calls that were coming in and the types of calls, and we talked a little bit about this idea that there are certain members of our community that are calling the Fire Department to do assistive lifts when maybe that should actually be within their field of what they do as opposed to relying on the Fire Department to do that. I'm wondering if this system is something that will aid you in kind of being able to gather that data more, or is that a separate component from this?
It helps, but I'm going to just advance real quickly here because it gives me the opportunity to talk about the two bottom lines there, which is community paramedicine and the potential exploration of a certificate of need. And really, what we're talking about here is low-acuity calls, and you're absolutely correct. Low-acuity calls are a significant impact on our response system. We currently have the beginnings of priority medical dispatch, but we're working with PRCC and our other partners, including AMR and Priority, to help us with a more robust priority medical dispatch system. And actually, the way that's going to be felt in addition to the Fire Department is those two ambulance providers because that also helps them triage those calls and potentially even put a different modality in the field that we don't currently have access to, that our medical director would sign off and say, hey, for this group of calls, you can downgrade the response or even have an alternative response and still be within medical protocol and risk management. So, yeah, we're looking, you're exactly right. This is an augment to that, and it will help us with that system status management component around that.
Mayor, can I ask?
Good news, thank you.
Councilwoman Cantelme.
Just to piggyback on that, Chief Dura, what about, have you thought about, I know I've seen in Phoenix now that my mother is an assistive living, that Phoenix has a stroke van. Could that be a service that you could have in a stroke van? And have you thought about that at all? Those have been incredibly successful, and I'm sure I don't know what the costs are, but if you could piggyback, it's cheaper to send a van than, you know, the ladder truck, the engineer, everybody out to pick up somebody off the floor in an assisted-living facility.
You know, without getting into the greater scope of healthcare in the Prescott region, what I do want to get into here is, yes, there is the potential for that. Now, I want to be very careful with how I word this because in another conversation we need to have with all of you, which is the renewal of our pre-hospital transport contract, there are stipulations specific to improving patient outcomes and alternative response solutions in that contract already with that provider. And it is, in essence, aimed at exactly what you're talking about. Now, it's not necessarily saying we're going to have a stroke van, but it is basically to say what other response models can we put out on the street to look at the reality of our pre-hospital care system here in Prescott and put things out there that help us with that efficiency. So yes, we're thinking about those types of ideas. We haven't specifically, though, talked about a, you know, a stroke van as you have in Phoenix. The other thing that I want to also put out there is the volume that you need to make sure that that unit, because it's extremely expensive, as you can imagine, there has to be a certain volume for a healthcare provider to consider putting something like that on the road before that metric really makes sense, if that makes...
Well, just to point out for the council's benefit and the public, Chief Dura and I went down to Phoenix to take a look at some of the newest, newer fire stations and some of the capabilities they had and some of their equipment in terms of the washing area now for the turnouts. But one of the things that one of the firefighters at that station had mentioned to me is they had had 1,972 calls to an assisted-living facility in one month.
Correct.
So if you take the amount of cost to send, again, a ladder, three firemen, you know, paramedics to an assisted-living facility, 1,972 times, do the math.
Yes.
It's inefficient. It ties them up. They can't be where they need to be. So I do think that this warrants some, again, forensic auditing to try to figure out, what is the cost, you know, relative to purchasing the van? And I suspect we're going to be ahead.
Yeah, and I'm glad you bring that up. So one of the things I've already communicated with our new City Manager, and we have not had this chance, but I have a feeling she saw that bullet item, which is one of our strategic issues in the Fire Department, is data analysis. And these are exactly the kind of things that I'm talking about, is to make sure that we look at this in a comprehensive way and get the right fix rather than just asking for Plan A harder, if that makes sense.
Hey, do you want to make a comment on that?
I do. This is a very important area in city operations that I think warrants a little bit. You guys are hitting all the right pieces here. You're thinking through all the right pieces here. As a growing community, as a community with the demographics that we have, there are certainly some things that we should be looking at and we should be planning for as ways to, whether it's dealing with community paramedicine and the low-acuity calls, whether it's the certificate of necessity, whether it's, you know, dealing with some of the issues related to our overtime and getting the right complement of staff to ensure that we have rovers, we have people that can, you know, cover the shifts when people are injured or they're out or whatever those things are and not have that burnout. These are always our very big policy questions we want to bring forward to this council to consider. They all come with, as you saw, with 89% or whatever it is of the budget that comes from the general tax base. You know, these are big decisions and probably will require some additional resources to be generated in order for the city to be able to provide some of these services, but they are very important services for the city. So we would like to bring, you know, a complement probably of some things as time goes on and we get a chance to get in front of you on that. But these are, you guys are hitting all the right, all the right items.
And might I suggest a regional effort be considered?
I would 100% agree. We have partners already. Is there ways to work with them? But on the other side of that, too, where we don't have those commonalities, we may want to look at creating our own ability to take care of some of these things as well. So all things to consider and things that I think are going to be important to bring back.
Thank you.
Now, Chief, as an aside, I know the turnouts have always utilized material that included PFAs.
Correct.
And with that being withdrawn from the marketplace, do you have replacement turnouts now that are going to be as effective, or what availability costs is...
Yeah, there are currently no alternatives globally, technically, to that. And currently, there's other litigation happening, not here, don't worry, but nationwide around that issue, and I have a feeling the industry is going to have to respond and figure out a different fire protective ensemble, you know, makeup at some point. So, yeah, that is absolutely an issue that's currently going on.
So that's next year's budget, huh?
It'll be a bigger tie, sir.
Bigger tie.
Please proceed.
Yes, sir. All right. Getting into our approved expenditure list or the key items, just, I'm going to kind of get through this. If you obviously have any questions, feel free to call those up, so I'm not going to cover every line item here. Just want to highlight a few things. First of all, in this year's budget, we're moving the municipal firefighters' cancer reimbursement assessment that I've come to you in the past to approve. That used to be out of the risk fund and other places in the city budget. We're now properly allocating that in the Fire Department budget. Some one-time expenses, we talked last time a little bit about the vehicle replacements. I want to, again, highlight the question that I got from you, Councilmember Moore, about, yes, we are budgeting for an engine for Station 76. That is partially in that fiscal '24 vehicle replacement. There's also carryovers, including our ARPA-funded ladder truck that you see there in fiscal year '23. So those are some highlights, as well as our, again, additional desire to help fleet services modernize our non-response fleet because of the repair and maintenance costs associated with that. The beginning of the Station 76 build is in there as well. We're now calling that build number one. For reasons I'm not going to get into here, it's mainly to give us that flexibility down the road, the system status management software you saw in there, as well as some other modernization projects. In the grant side, these are a lot of the grants that we would take to you one by one by one by one, and it does not necessarily mean that we're going to be applying and exercising every single one of those grant items. If there are issues with these grants that I understand have some political sensitivity that interests the council, I'll still have a conversation with the City Manager to see if we want to talk about that in some way, shape, or form so that you still have oversight over the exercise of those. It is simply, again, mainly here in administrative efficiency for things that are just, you know, cloud your agenda. But again, you do have my word that if we have things that do rise to the level of sensitivity, we will bring that back to you and make sure that you have good public discourse on those. And again, you saw the slide already, this is just to give you a little bit of a year-by-year roadmap of some of our higher-cost capital items that we're foreseeing here over the next five years. Of course, we can definitely talk about that, but I want to pause there real quick. Are there any questions before we kind of wrap things up for fire and turn it over to the next department?
Just a quick question, Mayor.
Councilwoman Moore.
This is a really small dollar amount, but that system status software that says fiscal year '24 for $120,000, is that the one that you said was going to be shared with CAFMAs? It's really only $60,000?
In essence, it gives us, this gives us the exercise, the budget space, to do it on our own.
Okay.
Of course, we're looking at doing it in partnership, so that number is actually likely to go down. Yes, sir.
Okay, because you mentioned that earlier.
Yep, exactly.
Councilmember Kent, tell me.
Chief Dura, if you go back one slide and you look at some of the, let's see, nope, I'm sorry, it was one more for that. Anyway, some of the retrofits on some of the older stations that we have right now, do you have plans in place for those, or is that something you have to start from ground zero?
Right now, there's just a budget placeholder. We've not done the full assessment work on that. And I would contend that we don't currently even have the project management bandwidth within the department to start that like tomorrow. We do need to do a good size-up of that, and I want to just make sure they understand that is for health and safety-related renovations. I'm not asking to put, you know, marble kitchens into our fire stations. That is to take bunker gear and move it out of the apparatus bay, take exercise equipment and put it in a proper space. Those are the, you know, the things that we're looking at. So, each station's going to have to get looked at in conjunction with our facilities department to make sure that we're doing it right.
Well, that's what I was concerned about, making sure that that was on a priority list immediately.
And as you can see here on the roadmap, it is, in terms of impact, fiscal impact, I'm planning right now for fiscal year '25, because we're going to have to use fiscal year '24 to size it up, if that makes some sense.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Okay. The last thing I'll cover real quickly here is, and I want to also call your attention, we did change this slide slightly. It still is basically the same background, but the proposed locations that were on that previous slide, we decided to remove because we think it's a little premature right now to start talking about that. But again, just want to call your attention to, when we're talking about fire stations that cost millions of dollars, the why behind why we're doing that. And you can just see the station locations that we currently have that cover North Prescott, and that includes Station 51 to some extent, way down there at the bottom left-hand corner. But really, it's Station 74 on Smoke Tree and Station 73 at the airport that's kind of landlocked back there behind Antelope Hills. And that is what we've got right now in that North Prescott area. The road travel miles that you see here is just, I know it's kind of hard to see, but the orange areas are six- to eight-minute travel times, and then the red areas are above eight minutes. That is just travel time on a GIS layer. That is not actual response times. Our actual response time experience could actually be slower than that because of the system busyness in the rest of the city. So, please understand that that is simply a model based on GIS roadmaps with speed limits, road widths, and, you know, those kind of things taken into consideration. So, that is the balance of our presentation for fire for this year. Is there any other questions I can answer for you?
So, I would expect that Deepwell Ranch and Hidden Hills probably are going to be in that orange category?
That is my expectation. And again, once those road networks get built out past the plat stage, that's when you can really start modeling in our GIS shop what that's going to look like. But you can imagine, it's probably not going to improve, so, without some kind of an action.
So, where is Station 76 primarily focused for its location?
So, the two areas that I'm looking at right now, and the timing of this is a little bit difficult, not getting into that in just a second, but the two primary locations that I'm looking at is on the 89A in Granite Dells corridor area and somewhere near Heritage Park and Emory Riddle. Those are the two major focus areas that we have currently. And there's a lot of reasons for that, to include relocating the ARF component at the airport, but also partnerships, for instance, that we could leverage with partners in those areas. The other thing is, we are so, as I mentioned, far behind on our capital infrastructure, getting a little further out. You know, I've gotten the question, wow, 89A in Granite Dells, that's a heck of a long way to put a fire station out there. Well, it might have been five years ago, but even today, we could start having that station be effective, and for sure, in five, 10, 15 years, that is a very effective location. And when we do a fire station, I want everybody to understand, that's a 50- to 75-year capital investment that we're making into our community, and it's got to have that lens on it. And that's why we're looking at those two locations right now.
Thank you.
Okay. Mark?
Public Works is next.
Bankruptcy sale.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Public Works Capital Program Manager. So, one of our, in establishing our capital program, one of the things we want to address is the strategic results in supporting council goals, which are providing highly-rated city services, including transportation with improved flow, well-maintained streets, public safety, water and wastewater services. The Public Works Capital Improvement Plan supports council's goals through the, what I'm going to show you coming up. I will acknowledge that this has been one of the more difficult years in regards to our capital program, just in the amount of projects that are affected due to material delays, price escalations, et cetera. I'll probably, I'll touch on a handful of them. Projects that we anticipated being complete or nearly complete at this point aren't there yet, and I will touch on a handful of those. The first area we'll talk about is our street capital projects, which includes preservation rehabilitation projects, circulation, roadway reconstruction, and drainage projects, which are part of the street program. So, our street circulation projects for this year, we have a little over $1.9 million budgeted for the year. Projects included are Fair Street and Gail Gardner Way traffic signal, Prescott Lakes Parkway and Sundog Ranch Road signal, and our ongoing sidewalk repair and replacement program. The two pictures in the lower left-hand corner are kind of a good example of what we try and accomplish with our sidewalk program. So, you can see a before-and-after picture there of work that's completed there. And then, please, feel free at any point during the slide, if you guys want to stop and ask a question, I'm more than happy to.
Councilwoman Moore.
How much of the Fair Street-Gail Gardner traffic signal is the city responsible for? I know that a lot of those funds were coming from somewhere else.
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, Quinn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, the Fair Street-Gail Gardner Way traffic signal is being funded through an HSIP grant. Ian can tell us what that stands for. It was applied for through our Central Gabapai Metropolitan Planning Organization group, and we were successful in receiving grant monies up to $1.2 million to put that signal in at that intersection. It was a safety grant, because the city had a fatality at that intersection a few years ago. So, it's actually driven by safety, more so even than traffic counts and traffic volumes.
So, with that grant, there's really no funds coming out of the city's budget?
That's correct, Councilman Moore. It would be, the city would pay for it, and then we would be reimbursed through the grant.
Okay. I was just wondering, because that makes it a little misleading. It looks like it's part of the 1.9 budget, when in reality, we're not paying anything for it out of the city budget.
Ultimately, the signal will be paid for through the grant. That's correct.
Thank you.
We're budgeting for it for appropriation purposes, and then we'll get reimbursed.
Reimbursed.
Moving on to our roadway reconstruction projects, we have a little, we have $7.8 million budgeted, I turned my page too soon, $7.8 million budget for this year. The bulk of that is going to be the Penn Eastwood Drive Project. And again, as what I addressed before with projects that were delayed, council awarded the Penn Eastwood contract on April 26 of last year. It was a 365-day contract. We didn't issue a notice to proceed until September, and that was mutually working with the contractor to not start the clock on the contract.
You know, Tim, going back a little bit, can you talk about this Sundog Ranch Road and Prescott Lakes Parkway, a signal planned for there? I'm not familiar with that.
Yes, sir. That's a project that's currently nearly completed in design and is anticipated to be constructed in FY '24. At this, with the heavy traffic volumes we have, and Ian might be able to touch on this as well, the heavy traffic volumes we have at that intersection with a number of city facilities there, we have the water operations, wastewater operations, the transfer station, the fire training facility, as well as the police range at the intersection, it's just, it's become a traffic hazard. And that project, like I said, we're nearly through the design on that one.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask on that, too? And where's the funding coming from for that? Is that also going to be a grant, or is that coming out of city?
That's coming out of Streets Fund.
Streets Fund, okay.
So, as I mentioned, like I said, roadway reconstruction projects, Penn Eastwood's gobbling up the lion's share of that type project this year. Our preservation and rehabilitation projects, which include our preservation program and rehabilitation program, we have $9.6 million budgeted. That will cover literally every aspect that we do, from surface treatments, which you see going on around a lot of areas around town right now, to full pavement reconstructs. We have a number of projects. I could read you a laundry list, but if you want to get ahold of me, I'd be more than happy to share that with you at any point in time. Drainage improvement projects, those are primarily funded through Yappi County Flood Control District funds. The city usually meets with Yappi County, and we discuss our needs, and they allot a certain amount of money for us each year. Our primary goal this year is drainage improvements in the Merritt, Lincoln, and Ruth area of the city. We had a public meeting.
Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
Thank you, Tim. The Lincoln improvements for drainage, I know we had that meeting last summer.
Yes, sir.
Prescott College that we attended. Are we talking about the same area? And is this more of a reconstruction, like rehabilitating that area after that construction project?
This could be a number of projects. We've conducted the drainage study, which is what we use for the public meeting. And so, there've been a number of projects earmarked in that area where the primary, where we have the primary issues. And knowing that Lincoln and Merritt is one of the more critical areas in that neighborhood. So, there's going to be a number of smaller projects that will address the bulk of these drainage issues that are there now.
I just want to make sure that, as the city looks at engineering and plans for drainage projects, that they're also looking at the rehabilitation of those areas after the project, so that we don't leave it denuded of natural habitat, like what happened with fan contracting came in for the trunk line there at the Lincoln Low Water Crossing, and how we removed a lot of trees. But there wasn't really a plan in place to replace any of the habitat that was actually holding the banks in place and providing shade and...
It's something, like, a lot of the improvements there are going to be at the street level.
Okay.
We have a lot of surface runoff issues now, so we're trying to address where we can install storm drains. It will not involve, I don't anticipate this time as we move through the design, I would not anticipate that we're going to be getting into the waterways themselves significantly.
Thank you.
Mayor approach him.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, I have a question. Get my days straight here. Tuesday, we had a gentleman come and talk about some concerns he had with his area over by Yappi Hills. I mean, and I'm guessing the answer to this question is yes, but I just want to kind of confirm this. Do we have a plan in place to look at these going forward, as, like, kind of looking forward at other areas that are targeted? I can't imagine that maybe we have a plan in place for storm control necessarily, or drainage improvements in Yappi Hills, since you just brought that up the other day. But is there a programmatic approach we're taking to, like, kind of look at other areas that, so that as, on an ongoing basis, does that make sense?
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Montoya. And, yeah, and Yappi Hills is one of the areas we do concentrate a lot on. We're currently wrapping up a project over there right now, including Hornet Way. We did a project out there like three years ago. We've done projects all over Yappi Hills addressing drainage issues that are ongoing out there. So, like I said, we try and utilize all the money that the county gives us, and it doesn't mean that all $600,000 may go to that neighborhood. We'll use, that's kind of where we've got our eyes this year. There could be any number of things where we might redirect those funds.
And so, you have kind of a long-term...
Yes, sir.
You're kind of working through, okay, this year, we're going to kind of focus maybe more on this side, but then we know that we need to come back maybe to this side over here in the next fiscal year?
Yes, sir.
Excellent. Thank you.
And the reason we showed you this picture here, this is where basically our Yappi County flood control money went last year. This is part of the Penn Eastwood project. This is the regional detention basin off of Penn and Eastwood that the project's ongoing right now. It's much further along than this. If you get a chance to go up there and take a look at it, it's a sizable structure, but the benefits it will provide downstream are going to be tremendous. So, moving on from streets...
Councilwoman Moore.
Before we leave drainage, can I just ask a question? Do you seek citizen input on drainage issues, or can citizens, like the man that came to, you know, called the public and spoke the other day? I know in my neighborhood, on Cedarwood, I don't live on that street, but it's in my neighborhood, there's been some home flooding the last two years with significant monsoon activity. And I was just wondering, you know, are you looking at, can we see what's in the queue for upcoming projects? Like, is Cedarwood next year or the year after? Or is there citizen input to say, hey, what about this area?
Excuse me, Mayor and Council, Janet Ramsey, Public Works Department. Yeah, I just want to address this just a little bit, because, of course, it's a hot topic. Last Friday, we had a big storm, and so, a lot of people were inundated and had a big issue with that. I want to tell you two things. One, drainage is usually addressed by the city on a regional basis. So, we cooperate with the flood control district, and we share those funds in that regard. With regard to development, not as much, but we will do some things and work with the citizens to mitigate their issues. So, we do take those things into consideration, yes. I'm taking concerns, questions, complaints about that right now. I wanted to let you know that I am gathering up information from folks, and we're going to address that as one, because there were a lot of people affected in that. I don't know if that helped, but I did just want to step in on that one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Janet.
Mayor, can I make a comment real quick?
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you. You know, Janet, what you just said kind of begs a question. I know from my years involved with the Arizona ROC, a lot of times what happens is, when you have a new build, and as part of the new build documents, you need to have a topo plan done with a drainage plan. And so, in order to get your CVO to occupy your new building, the inspector will come out, and he will check to find out that, you know, make sure all the engineering is complete, that is the swale, whatever they have to divert the water. And then, typically, what happens is the customer will move into the home, and then they will hire the landscapers. And the landscapers will come in, and they will remove the swales so that the grass is flat. And then, many times, it'll cause flooding. It happens a lot. So, do you have a plan in place that, you know, you're able to know what, or be able to determine, what is the city's problem and what is the private homeowner's problem that causes the flooding?
Councilmember can tell me. That's a very good point. You're right. I think a lot of people have the perception that the city's doing the entirety of the drainage studies and that they're doing, that's not really how that works. The developers bring those plans to us. They're the ones with the engineers, and the city's job is a bit more to coordinate and to approve those final plans, but we're not engineering those plans. So, if there are, and on behalf of anyone, if there are significant adjustments to that, that does happen, exactly as you said. People add fences and landscaping that diverts the water and causes...
That's why lawyers are busy.
That's exactly right. We live in a city that's beautiful. We love it because it's hillside. So, we have a lot of water to deal with. We have a lot of drainage issues, and, you know, one new change in anybody's property can affect the down slope. So, we have to be cognizant of all of that. That's what, like I said, I'm trying to put together a little bit of a response. We are looking at each of these cases individually to understand, is it a city problem, or is it more of a personal property problem? But you're right, the city does not, in its totality, make those drainage adjustments for everyone.
Well, I know even in my neighborhood, which is a very, very old neighborhood, those drainage swales were probably there 50 years ago. But over time, as we have these, you know, monumental downpours, the silt begins to build up over the years. And so, all of a sudden, the swale is now topical, and they do need to be addressed. And I don't know, do we just go out to those problems after the problem has occurred? Or do we have people that, you know, are proactive in looking at some of those major, you know, problems that do exist in those older neighborhoods in particular, where a lot of those drainage swales are not cement-lined, they're actually just still dirt? And now, it's, of course, built up, and they're gone.
Sure. I think both of those things, actually. We're trying to be proactive, but you're right, things change over time. And so, that, when those things come to our attention, most of the time is when somebody calls, because they have an issue, there's a problem. And so, we go out and address those. As you've seen in your neighborhood and throughout the city, there have been a lot of things the city, there have been a lot of things that the city has done to retrofit. But again, back to the storm on Friday, that was a particularly unusual circumstance. We're just getting some data, but most of the properties are built to a 25-year standard. That's the current 25-year, can I think of this? 25-year storm standard.
Yeah.
So what would occur typically in 25 years? That doesn't mean it happens every 25 years or that it won't happen again within that 25 years, but that's the standard. That, the standard was different much, some time ago. So much different actually. And so it depends on a lot of those things. But do we need to go back and do some retrofits? Are we taking the, the information? Yes. But is that, do we have the ability to go fix every single situation? No. And as we're gathering up this data and learning that that storm on Friday was probably maybe even in excess of a typical 100-year storm.
Yeah.
Again, not, that it doesn't happen every 100 years, but in excess of 100-year storm. It, it's not going to be surprising that we're dealing with a lot of after effects.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Councilwoman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, to your point, Janet, I appreciate that. Like probably a lot of people, I get an email from the Meteorological Department, Embry-Riddle periodically, et cetera. They mentioned that the storm that happened, I guess it's a week ago Friday now, was the most rain that in recorded history the Prescott has ever received, not just on that date, but ever in the month of May or the month of April. 1.67 inches, if I recall, out at the airport. It's obviously different every place. We didn't get quite that much at my place. But I guess the overall message I'm hearing is it's, it's not the city's fault every time it rains. Is that, is that a fair way to sum it up?
I wish we could control that, but unfortunately I don't have that power.
But it does sound, from what Tim's saying, like we try to be very proactive about this. And, and when we need to be reactive, we react appropriately. And, and as to Connie's point, it's not always the city did something wrong and the city needs to fix it. It's just, you know, nature.
That's right. On behalf of operations, we'll go out, we'll check if there are things that we need to be doing. Operations and maintenance, cleaning, clearing, et cetera. If that's something that we can do on behalf of operations, we take care of it. If it's something that needs a bigger fix, then we have to have a greater discussion. And that may be a capital project that we come back to you and may not. It just depends on the circumstances, but each is different. In those inundations, two inches and, and a few hours, I, I don't think we're going to be able to protect everybody in that situation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And maybe we can pass a resolution.
That should take care of it.
Good thinking. Okay. Would you like me to move on?
Please, Tim.
Okay. That's okay. So moving on to our water capital projects, three categories here. Our water production projects, which is exactly how it sounds, how we get the water out of the ground and start delivering it to customers. Distribution projects, which is the pipes that basically run down the streets and go to your house. And water quality projects, which are our lakes. So the projects, we've got $8.6 million budgeted this year. Projects that we're primarily working on is Juniper Vista and Karen Drive. That project is ongoing now. Zone 2427, water pipeline upsizing, which is over on the west side of town off of Thumbute and Sherwood. Not named after me. And the Quaca Crossing Water Main, which is part of a project that goes across the tribe. As, as the tribe develops, Quaca Crossing, which I understand Quaca means deer in Yavapai. So, but that's been a joint project that we coordinated with the tribe. When they build that road, we will build the water line across there. We're just waiting for the tribe to, to give us the thumbs up to move forward. Our water production projects, obviously the big ticket item, we've discussed several of the GMPs and this project with council before. The intermediate pump station and water production facility, $26 million budgeted for this year through the water fund. It's funded through a WIFL loan. The pictures you see there are the new tanks that were completed, not entirely completed, but fundamentally completed late last year. Two 6 million gallon tanks. And then for some perspective, inside the tank with just one gentleman standing there, that is a 6 million gallon tank with no structure support for the roof, which is one of the first times we've done that in the city. Most of our tanks are supported by columns within the, the, the tank itself. But they're pretty amazing structures. I know we had the pleasure of taking many of you out there to, to see the site. Additional water production projects, the Zone 56 Tank Pipeline and Pump Station Project. Many of you have seen that going on up above York Motors. A lot of inquisitive minds was what, what we were, what we were doing up there. I heard everything from a subdivision to a hospital. But that project's underway. And that is another project that saw some significant delays. Council awarded that contract in May of last year. We did not issue a notice to proceed till October. If we would have started on time, we'd be finishing up in November of this year. We're getting, we've been notified now that some of the electrical equipment we need for the pump station will not be delivered till November of this year. So while we're anticipating a March of next year completion on that project, that may be in jeopardy just due to the delays we're seeing. And it's, electrical equipment's one of the big items that we're seeing delays in. And I think one of the things that we did that was very beneficial for the intermediate pump station site is we issued a separate GMP that council approved just for material procurement. And that allowed us to pull the trigger on ordering equipment. And so as the production, as the pump station site develops, the equipment will already be on site because there was a mechanism for the contractor to go ahead and procure that equipment. The last one is our Zone 41 Mingus Pump Station Tank and Pipeline Project. That will replace a, this is going to replace an old 1940s-era pump station on the corner of Mingus and Douglas. You probably maybe glance at it as you drive by, as well as replacing, there's two tanks up on top of the hill where all the cell towers are now. We're going to replace that with a single one and a quarter million gallon tank up there on that site. The picture you see there, that's the, the pore for the floor of the Zone 56 tank by York Motors. And the picture on the right is the interior of the new water production facility out in Chino. Water quality projects, $1.2 million from the water fund, primarily this year is all geared towards Watson Lake improvements. We're working through plans right now to install aeration systems out on the lake as well as potentially stocking white amure fish that are veggies, veggie eaters. They like to eat weeds and, from what I can understand, talking to some people, they get rather large. So that's, both of those are programmed for this year.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Tim, with aeration and the fish project over there, is there going to be a demonstrable effect that people who utilize the lake for recreation will notice in, in the...
There will be a significant, and from what I've understood in my conversations with the people that know a lot more about this than I do, there will be a significant increase in, in water quality at the lake as, as this project progresses.
So that means if my son falls in, I don't have to like keep him outside for a week?
I've fallen in a couple of times kayaking myself and I still only have two arms. I didn't grow a third arm or...
No, that's exciting.
Yes. The increase in water quality will be significant.
That's exciting because I, it's one of those things that I think, you know, it will make the utilization of the lake for recreation even more popular than other areas.
And so what you'll, what it'll avoid is what you see in the lower right-hand corner of that picture with the harmful algal blooms that you get out there in the warmer months, especially in the shallower water.
Excellent.
Anybody else?
Say something real quick.
Sure.
I think, I think Mayor and Council, I think it's fair to, to mention that this is a really eco-friendly and, you know, kind of our, our least expensive way to try to handle, to deal with this problem. If, you know, if we need to, there are other ways, but they can come with a lot more cost to us. And this, we believe that this actually is the best way to proceed for now. And we'll see if it, it works out.
Moving on to wastewater capital projects, two primary focuses here is our wastewater collection, which is basically once it leaves your house and gets into the system. And then wastewater treatment, which is what we do with it when it gets to the plant. So collection projects for this year, we have SunDog Trunk Main Phase C. You'll be hearing more about that in the near future. Phase C3 is, is the next phase that we're going to be doing there. The Willow Creek Gravity Sewer Project, which will eliminate a lift station.
Mayor Protem.
It's higher, Tim.
That's okay.
Just curious, how many phases of the SunDog Trunk Main do we anticipate?
C3 will be the last phase that we're going to do.
Okay.
And it is going to, it's basically going to circumvent the Prescott Indian Tribe, going around, basically around to the, on the west side and then across the north side, a little bit north of Rosser, and then connect back to SR89 at the Rosser, SR89 interchange.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's part of the bigger centralization goal. I mentioned the Willow Creek Gravity Sewer Project, which will eliminate a force main that currently runs along the north side of Willow Lake Road and will go to a gravity main. That project's very close to approaching 90% design. The Slaughterhouse Gulch Sewer Improvement Project, that's the picture you see on the right. That's the city's 21-inch trunk main that crosses, crossed the tribe, crosses Slaughterhouse Gulch around Kiiji Dava. As you can see, there's two supports that support that pipe in the middle of that creek. Potential for the big boulders that are just above it to possibly take that out. So the project is to basically put a free span, a freestanding spanning, bridge-type structure across there with a new main. And this project is, is probably the crown jewel of projects that have been delayed. We opened bids back in September, council awarded on September 27th of last year. We don't anticipate starting that project till August. We're waiting that long basically for the bridge structure itself. So the contractor, it hasn't even been issued a notice to proceed yet. It'll be close to a year after council awarded the contract that, that we're going to be able to put a shovel in the ground and get that project done. The next one is Yavapai Hills Number One Lift Station Rehab. It's over in the far corner of Yavapai Hills over near Robin Drive. That's a project we have earmarked for our AEL, which I will discuss in a few more slides. Wastewater Treatment Plants, projects. The biggest item here will be centralization, our goal's there. And the Effluent Tank Pipeline and SR89 Widening Project. And the photos you see below are all projects that we've done in preparation in conjunction with future centralization. Those are very large trunk mains. Some instances, the one in the lower left is a 48-inch, the one in the far right's a 24-inch. Any questions? So total for this fiscal year, the total public works capital budget is $79,267,987, of which you can see all, all of our categories as well as our vehicle replacements and miscellaneous projects and equipment. So moving on to capital improvement programs, requests for AELs, and this is our first year going, looking at this. We've earmarked a couple of projects that are...
Now, Tim, I had one other question.
Sure.
With the ongoing funding for upgrading of our roadways and conditions, what do you expect the, the city's pavement condition index will be at the end of the next fiscal year?
Wish I could tell you right off the top of my head. I think it's right around a 65.
I thought we were at 67.
I, like I said, I'm, I'm pulling that off the top of my head. I don't know that we're up to a 67, but I think I, somewhere in that 65, 66 range.
So do we expect to be there?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. Yeah. And one of the things I'll talk about here in a second is, is a reevaluation of the entire city network as well. We've made incremental strides, probably have stayed level this year, I would estimate, based off the, any number of situations, availability of contractors, availability, availability of the materials. It's just been a, a year...
Hot holes.
Yes. So addressing our, our AEL requests, like I said, we've earmarked two projects. The Yavapai Hills Number One Lift Station Project, which I just talked about, $1.1 million this year with an estimated total of $3 million. And the Zone 52 Water Main Connect, which is out on the north side of town from Pioneer Parkway out to the Longview subdivision. And, and the next couple of slides, I'll, I'll give you a, a site map and kind of give you a little bit better description of the project. Both those projects are fundamentally done as far as design goes and we can kind of hit the ground running early in FY '24. So there's not a lot of lead time. So that's why we, I kind of identified those projects as being kind of more shovel-ready and a prime candidate for AEL request. We also have our Quality Assurance and Quality Control Program for the Capital Improvement Program for $300,000. And an item that we work in conjunction with our GIS group, Aerial Digital Elevation Model Contour for $110,000. On the pavement side, a couple of program items that we do every year, our crack seal material and installation for 300. I'll skip to the next one because I'll probably talk about the other one a little bit more, but the trip hazard elimination project, which has proven beneficial for us to go around and take care of minor imperfections in the sidewalk without having to do a full replacement. It's proven very beneficial for us. I think we're in our fourth year of doing that program.
Mayor Protem.
Tim, and you probably don't know the answer to this off the top of your head. So if you don't, that's fine. But did you do one of those on Ruth Street? Is that my, I feel like I've seen some of those over in that area of town.
We were all over town and Ruth Street may have been one of the areas we, because the, are you talking about the proximity of the high school?
Yeah, correct.
There was, there were some areas done in proximity of the high school.
All right. And, and I, as someone...
And we look at higher, we've, we've kind of looked at higher traffic areas when we started the program. We looked at downtown, areas around schools. We'll be able to expand it a little bit further now as we, as we move out. It's kind of like our crack seal project, our program. A couple of years ago, that was well over a half million dollars. But we've kind of caught up. We were, we fell behind for a number of years. Actually, our streets department used to do that work. And then we started contracting it out and able to grab larger sections of the city. So that number's actually come down over the, the last couple of years.
Do you have any idea where it was before and where to, in relation to what your, is for this budget?
As far as crack seal?
Yeah, the trip hazard. Are you saying that one is...
No, that one, and that one has gone up a little bit too. We used to be right around $50,000 a year, but we're able to, we're, we're finding we're able to get more areas. So we're, we've increased the budget there.
Well, as someone who runs down that road, thank you for making it so less likely that I'll trip due to anything else other than my lack of coordination.
We do not want that to happen. And then the last item as far as pavement goes is our pavement condition assessment contract. We're currently coming to the end of our contract with IMS. So we want to advertise for a, to procure professional services for our new contract this upcoming fiscal year, which will include driving the entire city again and updating our maps, our data that we have, getting that implemented into Lucidity, and updating the city's PCI overall with the, for the entire program.
Tim, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Councilwoman can tell me.
Tim, do you have specs that you send out to the repair, the people that repair? For example, a curbing or a sidewalk? Are there specifications on how to do those repairs?
Absolutely. Yeah, the city has standard details that we use for, for all activities like that.
So is there a specification for the, the amount of space in between the crack? Or if it's a hairline crack or if it's something that's opened up, do you cut it out?
Yeah, if it gets too wide, we're, we're going to cut it out. I mean, sometimes you see larger cracks in the sidewalk and it may have been an expansion joint when that sidewalk is initially installed. And for whatever reason, the, the expansion joint has either come out or just deteriorated to a point where you, you end up with a little bit, maybe a half inch, three-quarter inch gap, where you wouldn't have it on a, what we call a construction joint, which is where a joint where the contractor actually physically tools a joint in or cuts a joint in. So I think when you see a larger gap like that, it could be any number of issues. Usually if you see a gap really large in a sidewalk, it's because it's doing something someplace else very nearby, heaving or something like else that pulls that apart.
Yeah, what I was referring to...
If it's nice and level, you're probably looking at expansion joint that's just gone away.
Yeah, this isn't, what I was referring to is an expansion, is not an expansion joint. It was actually a, a crack and some curbing. And that, what I was curious about is AL Minor did that work on that project that I'm referring to. Did they have a two-year workmanship on that?
Two-year, two-year warranty on all city projects.
So then we take over after the two years?
Yes.
On those repairs?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? So as we mentioned, the two bigger capital improvement projects, the Yavapai Hills Number One Lift Station is over in the corner, Yavapai Hills, right on the edge of the city limits. But it is where pretty much all the gravity flow from Yavapai Hills goes to. It used to be a small packaged sewer treatment plant. That has been abandoned for a number of years and is just a pump station now. So it's in dire need of some upgrades. And so that's the first phase that we're going to do out there. You can kind of see the proximity down Highway 69. And then the second one is the Zone 52 Water Main Connect to the Northwest Regional Tank. You can see in the lower corner, that's the tank that's up on the side of the hill up there above Pioneer Parkway. The new main will extend from just on the south side of Pioneer Parkway up to existing tank and pump station in Longview. The pump, the tank and pump station will go away as part of this project. And it will provide a redundant, definitely more reliable feed to that neighborhood. They currently have an eight-inch feed that comes all the way from Pinion Oaks cross-country to that location. If they are, if something happens in that, in that line, they are out of water. So this will provide, especially the size and being able to rely on the tank for their, their source and their, and their delivery will make things much better for them out there. And with that, I am done with the capital side. Does anybody have any further questions? Thank you for your time today.
Thanks, Tim.
Fun stuff now. Onto operations for Public Works. With about 94, I just counted there roughly, with about 94 people making up the field operations in the city's Public Works Department, you'll see a lot of the expenses going on towards ongoing expenses and a lot of the things that are going to end up on your AEL, the Approved Expenditure List. So we're just going to highlight a few of them for you this year, or right now, that are going on this year. Starting with something that I... are going on this year, starting with something that I wanted to just talk about that I was, actually was in last year. So if you see the picture over there on the right, that's our new snow facility. We're just about to break the bottle of champagne over that. One of the first, I think the first presentation that I gave to you was talking about that snow facility that we have now that's made of a lot of bubble gum, duct tape, and ingenuity because it was welded together, traffic, or streetlights and traffic signal poles. It's done its time, it was a safety hazard. This, this guy is beautiful, and it will be much safer. It's a real gem, so if you're out there by, on the highway by Sun Dog, take a look, it's, it's beautiful. And like I said, we'll be cracking the bottle of champagne here pretty soon for that one. That was a 23 highlight. For next year, we have some facilities proposed that will support council's strategic goal for highly-rated city services, delivering efficient and effective services, and continuous process improvement. This example is, is a great one of that. If you've been out to the transfer station, you know that it can be a mess. We have one way in and one way out, and the public safety facility, the training facility, is beyond the transfer station. So we get traffic backed up quite a bit. Sometimes they have to light some sirens to get past our line if they have an emergency. And so we have a proposal to fix that. We're going to be moving the scales out to the middle of Sun Dog with two bypass lanes on either side. So the weight, the scales and the fee booth will be out in the middle of the road, and everybody will be able to pass on either side of it. It's going to be a great facility. And in doing that, we'll be pushing most of the traffic back out to that center lane, getting them out of the transfer station, so we'll be able to move, move people through more effectively, much more efficiently, and I think we'll, we'll see these lines reduce pretty quickly. Okay. I'm sorry, this is my first time with the clicker, so no, I knew, down. See, Gwen's saying I, down, I knew. All right, and as you know, we have a lot of the cool tools. So we have a writing sweeper plow proposed in the budget, that's going to be, appear actually on the AEL, but we wanted to highlight that for you. And we have a hydro excavator, thus for our water. So hydro excavators, just what it sounds like, we're actually using water to bore and do some of the digging and preparation for our water services. A lot of our vehicles that are, that go into that $10 million, so there's a lot of highlights. Some of them we've brought to you, and at other times, we talked to you, was we did the rate study, and we talked about the vehicles involved in that, so that's, that's a part of this. And then we're going to talk about recurring operational necessities that are going to, again, appear on your AEL. With about 94 of the people in field operations and public works, these are big expenses, but they include the everyday things that we use, like respirators, hard hat, safety glasses, gloves, vests, reflectives, and jackets, things like that, so. And then, of course, uniforms and laundry. And I will, will tell you that, that our employment situation has been affected by that, as we have turnover, that's one of the things that, it gets affected. So we have to buy new and re-outfit people, and so one of the reasons that we're really looking to retain more and recruit less. Okay, next. Everybody's favorite topic, snow. So we have some snow de-icing materials and cinders up there. The expenses for that have gone, increased significantly in the last year as, with everything else. Some new wing plow attachments, that's a fancy doodad on the side of the plows that makes it much more efficient and effective. And we actually have, are planning and are starting to preview some routing software. So that's another of the efficiencies that we're looking forward, when, when we have a lot of people from a lot of different departments, it's kind of an all-hands-on-duck situation when we have snow. And so this routing software will enable us to find the most efficient way, make sure that we're not backpedaling and double, double-serving some, and so that will make us a lot more efficient. Again, with the solid waste rate study that we all talked to you about, we have quite a few things that are going forward here. Now, some of these are just operational necessities, the waste management disposal fees, our, our costs for that were increased in this year. Garbage recycling and hauling fees, of course, increased this year. Methane monitoring at the landfill, that's our closed landfill, we do not currently have a landfill, but our closed landfill, so that's some post-closure requirements that we're, we're taking care of there. And then just ordering some equipment and materials, 65-gallon residential garbage and recycled containers, those are replacements and new, and then commercial and front load, commercial front load and roll-off dumpsters. A new excavator purchase, that's going to be for our chipping and brush operation. And then some miscellaneous operations costs, including inert crushing. That's, that's actually a waste diversion, so we take in throughout the year clean concrete, asphalt, large debris, and then we crush it and sell it back.
Councilman Moore.
Janet, on the 65-gallon residential garbage and recycled containers, how often do you have that expenditure? And is that a pass-through expense to the homeowner, or is, like in their monthly bill?
Well, they don't necess, that is included in the rates that, overall, so it's not a separate inclusion unless they have extra containers. But they have a life cycle theoretically about 10 years, it just kind of depends on their use, and they do have to be replaced quite frequently. And then, of course, they, they have breaks and go, they disappear.
That's a lot of money.
It is a lot of money, they're expensive containers.
Okay.
And finally, with the solid waste division, something that we're really, really proud of and really excited about is a routing software. This is, again, per the rate study, and this is to improve the efficiencies throughout the division. We're looking for efficiencies all the time. It also helps a lot when we have drivers who have to change, and so we've got a new driver come in, somebody has to substitute, et cetera. This routing software is invaluable in getting us back out, keeping us on time and keeping us moving forward, so making the best of the staff that we have existing. Okay, and the utilities, AEL, so utilities, water, wastewater, and all of those services in between. We have a service for meter replacements. That's just the typical replacements that are required through the life cycle. Meter reading equipment, potable water tank inspections, that's something that we have to do every 10 years, and they are, in fact, due this year, they all do. Generator replacements and new purchases, bio-solids hauling, lift station pump replacements and rehab, polymer that's used in the sludge de-water process, you really don't want more details about that, but I'll share if you want. And same...
Councilman Moore.
Just another question on the bio-solid hauling. Do we get any money for that? Like, do we sell that for fertilizer or for anything that...
At this time, we are not, no. I know some, in some cases, there is a market for that, but that's not the case.
Okay.
Interested, Councilman?
I guess we could talk, yeah. And then more materials and chemicals, et cetera, involved in the operations of our Oop, went too fast. Okay. Then closing out with our utilities, again, we have the cured-in-place pipe lining, pipe bursting, that's the process that we, I think we've talked to you a little bit about that, that's a really cool process. And if you get a chance, we're actually doing that right now, and we'll be doing it a bit more, obviously, as we go forward. Lift station control panel replacements, root control, water and wastewater rate study, so it is, in fact, time for that rate study, and we will be implementing, or beginning that very soon. And then just some miscellaneous analytical services, SCADA on-call services, our sand filter replacement, which is a DEQ requirement, and trucks and equipment. So before I turn this over to Ms. Gwen, if you have any questions for me, feel free to answer.
Councilman Tenny.
Thank you, Mayor. Really quick, I should probably be up on all these acronyms. SCADA on-call services, help me out.
Ooh, okay, that's one I wasn't prepared for. Gwen?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you help? Sorry, that just totally escaped me, I know it under, under ordinary...
So SCADA is our electrical control system that monitors all of our water and wastewater facilities. It's an acronym for the software that, that runs that program, so that we can be alerted remotely if there's something happening within the system, as well as just working remotely because we have 29 tanks, you know, 86 lift stations, we have, we have a significant amount of infrastructure here in the city, and so SCADA allows us to work remotely from those sites, and we require on-call services because we do not have the technical expertise in-house to maintain it constantly, and so we need those professional services to assist us.
Sounds great, thank you so much.
And in summary, that, that system sends out alerts to our team if we notice significant variations in the levels, so we can get the right team out there. I thought she wanted to know what the acronym stood for.
And it looks like...
I do.
This is fantastic, I may use this in casual conversation later this week, so here we go.
According to my quick Google, it means the supervisory control and data acquisition. So it's basically what they're saying, it's a way for us to control it remotely.
I told her that.
Fantastic. Thank you, all three of you, appreciate that.
All right, and if you have no other questions, then I'll turn it over to Gwen to wrap it up on behalf of Public Works.
Can you describe what this hydro excavation truck does?
That's kind of interesting sounding.
Yeah, so that is, that actually excavates, we actually use water to, we use water to bore and, and drill, so it's, so it's largely in the place of digging to expose the water pipe and water lines throughout the city.
So it's kind of a high-pressure directed water...
Boring.
It is, it is in fact, and it can pump that, pump it, and haul it away, so that's why it has the big tank with it, but yes, it is in fact, literally waterboard.
So that's going to be totally new to your fleet, or is it a replacement?
That one is a new, that one's, that one's new, sorry, we had, we had a couple, but that one is the new one. And so that one is, we've been in the process, we've, in the past, we've shared, and there are a lot of concerns with that sharing. For one, this, this truck is specifically outfitted for the specific purposes of the aberration. In other cases where we're sharing it with wastewater, there are a lot of issues with that, we have to sanitize and sterilize in between, it's just really not very effective. And so in order to keep this team moving and productive all the time, this is a truck that will be assigned just to water. That's not to say in an emergency.
So do you anticipate it being used regularly for different projects?
It will, in fact, probably be used in just about every day, so...
Every day?
Yes.
That sounds justified.
A lot of cities bring it in to direct people who come for the open call to the public a fifth time in a row with the same topic. I'm not recommending it in this case, but that's, that's one possible usage of the water sheds as well.
At the, at the sales...
I have a pilot project.
At the sales demonstration, we were told that the excavator part will suck off a human head. We've always looked, we've looked, we've looked for the volunteer, we have yet to get one, so...
Again, I would, I would echo Councilman Tenny's sentiment, we could volunteer a volunteer.
We usually get lots of recommendations, but no volunteers.
I think we're in the TMI category here.
Thank you, that's...
We're going to go on the side of safety with that one, okay? All right, so I'm hoping to wrap up Public Works here for you. We have a few more AEL items on our list. This one is related to our National Pollution Discharge Elimination System budget, which is primarily water quality in Matt Colleen's world. So we do program in about $100,000 each year for monitoring of all four of our lakes and reservoirs, Upper and Lower Goldwater, as well as Watson and Willow, as well as treatment and nutrient. We are going to be implementing a phosphorus nutrient binding process this year in Watson Lake as part of the TMDL, and so that's what these monies are for. In the water resources realm, as you know, we're in the second year of our application for our decision and order, and as part of that, we utilize outside consultants, including Herb Dishlip, Matrix, New World, their contract is related to the decision and order, but they also do work for the comprehensive agreement number one, which is ongoing for another 15 months. And then we have a letter of engagement with Mike Pierce over at Gammage and Burnham as part of the decision and order. Other work that we're doing with an outside consultant includes James Holt LLC, he's working on a lake management plan for Willow Lake. In the Transportation and Traffic Division, they often purchase things such as traffic signal cabinets and grid smart detection systems, rapid flash beacons, materials for their sign shop, as, and as well as the, that should say semi-annual striping, not annual striping.
Councilman Moore.
Gwen, can we go back to the last slide, please?
Sure.
For James Holt, the professional services, the plan that he's drawing up, is that for recreational use or management of the actual water in the lake?
So we, we did some, Jim performed some informal survey and data gathering for us from staff and, and others, and then we'll be hiring a third-party consultant to actually perform a lake management plan, but it will primary, it will include recreational component to it, but primarily it will be focused on the, the land management of the lake.
So I guess my question then, is recreation services a part of this?
Absolutely.
Because I know when the, the earth mining operation left the west end of the lake, it seems like there was trying to develop some plans for the future of Willow Lake, and I was just wondering if this was addressing that?
That will be included in this management plan. In fact, it's one of the biggest focus areas as well, as well as invasive species and other things, so that we can improve water quality within the lake as well as use of the lake.
Thank you.
So again, transportation and traffic, the things on this list are, are things that we use in the day-to-day operation of our traffic and division. We generally don't purchase things like signal cabinets and grid smart detection system unless we use the one that we have in the yard. So we order a couple at a time, and then when we utilize them, we order replacements so that we don't have materials delay issues around a safety issue such as traffic signals. And that's the end of Public Works' presentation, unless you have questions for our department as a whole. Thank you.
No. Airport.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. So the airport budget, you can see our beautiful terminal there on the front page. And we had a lot of fun doing this, and what we were thinking about is, you know, how does the future of the airport look, as well as how is the recent past? So some of what I'll be discussing today is, is what's happening right now, what's happened in the last five years, and what's going to happen in the next five. So we sort of have a decade snapshot. And we all have to learn the down, right? Good. So this is, our, our, our plan is based on the city council's strategic plan discussions. There are two goals that are specific to the airport, one that relates to economic development, which has airport components, and the other one is relating specifically to the airport itself. Under the economic development front, we're looking at considering an economic development study and to assess land impacts near the airport. And so part of economic development is saying, what can we do to assure that those parcels that we already have, for example, in the area like the W parcel we refer to, would be an area that might be developed to the benefit of the city and the citizens. Also, there is an objective under economic development that considers economic development strategic plan, and in that strategic plan, it, it encompasses a lot of what's happening in the airport area. There are several goals under the airport-specific, I should say strategies, under the airport-specific goal. One is to better utilize regional common interests. In this case, this particular strategy, 1A, dovetails with strategy 1D, in which we want to bolster business and economic growth. It's presumed with all of our community partners, they want economic growth, we do, those areas overlap our areas, so it makes good sense to collaborate with those partners. 1B discusses collaboration with neighboring jurisdictions to establish IGAs. This is actually referring to things like the protection of the airport and the protection of the community, and those IGAs would be something like we've had in place before with Yavapai County and with Prescott Valley. We also want to evaluate land use and strategic land acquisition and placement of infrastructure to incentivize the type of growth that we want to see and the type of land use that we want to see. And finally, dropping down to 1E, it's time to update the airport-specific area plan, the airport master plan, the airport layout plan, and also the land development code, and that's to reduce encroachment and support the future airport evolution. So when we were setting a course for implementation, we noticed that there is, there are quite a few goals that relate to the airport... a few goals that relate to the airport, that the City Council has put on your own, your own strategic plan. Initial considerations, let's kind of talk about it geographically. On the north side of the airport, we're building that safe complex in conjunction with the Embry-Riddle Air Nautical University Initiative on that side. The W parcel, which is sort of on the south side, is, is something that we were looking at for options and next steps. It could be independently evaluated for development. It could also be something where we decide maybe strategically, there should be some divestiture of some of that land or those parcels. To bring that back in, because I do not believe that the city wants to be in a constant or perpetual land ownership. It's either use it or decide which areas should be appropriately divested. We're going to look at other land acquisitions around the airport and timing for those land acquisitions. And then, finally, I think we need to look at a series of plans that do need update. About every one to two years, you update your airport layout plan, and we'll be showing you the latest airport layout plan update. But we expect to update it again in the next 12 months. We also are looking at an airport master plan update that will look at the future of the airport holistically and also move forward to integrating that with the Airport Specific Area Plan. We'll make sure that the Economic Development Strategic Plan takes into account what we want to do in the airport area. And also, look at the possibility of a commercial corridor study, particularly Highway 89A and 89 in that area. And I think it would be good to collaborate, obviously, with other communities along those areas. So, really, what we're looking at is what type of infrastructure, what type of planning, and how can we move forward to not just discuss strategic planning, but to actually implement the strategic plan? So, here's an example of the north side of the airport, which I just mentioned.
Dr. Sabata, I think, do I understand that correctly, that some of these updated plans are required when we apply for FAA funding? They expect that to be included?
That is correct.
In the application process?
That is correct.
So, it's necessary?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Thank you.
So, on this diagram or this map, you can see that the Strategic Academic Flight Education Complex is depicted here. They actually have slightly revised the way that the aircraft are laid out. They're almost on a diagonal. But this gives you an idea of a situation where we collaborated with a private partner. Their investment in this area is $5 million to start, and it probably will climb. In addition, you can see that there's potential for, for an expansion of that area into some of the local areas that are identified for potential land acquisition. In the map on the left-hand side, you can also see a yellow, what we call a bypass taxiway or a bidirectional taxiway. To the right of that yellow turn, I wish I could point at it so you can see, but does everybody see the yellow on the left? The taxiway on the right-hand side is referred to as Juliet. That is a new taxiway that is under construction as part of the Taxiway Charlie Realignment Project Phase Three. We think that there needs to be a bidirectional taxiway to allow aircraft to pass both ways to get up to this Strategic Academic Flight Education Complex. We affectionately refer to that as Romeo. That's Romeo and Juliet, going back and.
Airport, Tim.
Thank you, Mayor. Robin, am I correct in, in thinking that this, the idea of this is to allow Embry-Riddle to utilize the airport without creating stoppage on the runway over there? That's kind of the problem this is solving?
There are actually multiple benefits. One is, right now, there are multiple crossings of the major commercial service runway. We're trying to get an accurate count on it, but we think it can be as many as 100,000 times a year, you're going to have a crossing of that major commercial service runway, which is a safety concern. The second benefit is that by using that, by having them on that side of the airport, they can have access to both runways with that end-around taxiway that you can see in the diagram. Another benefit to this happens to be a community benefit. And what that is, is each of these have a respective pattern. One sort of circles to the north, and the runway in the bottom circles sort of to the south. And the more, the more heavier use of, or more balanced use between the runway means a more balanced overflight of anybody who's in that area.
So, I guess broadly speaking, it'll increase the efficiency of the use of both of those runways?
That's correct. And it'll increase the safety factor. So, we were actually just at a runway safety action team meeting this last week with the air traffic control folks and users in the community. The extension of both of these runways, and there are staggered parallels right now, which is considered to be less safe than parallels that are not staggered. Because if you're a pilot and you're approaching and visually, you're trying to see the end of one runway, and they're staggered, you can sometimes confuse a runway for a taxiway or the wrong runway. And we actually did have a wrong surface landing that occurred about, within the last month, where a person was lining up for the general aviation runway, and they missed. And they ended up landing on a close portion of Taxiway Charlie, and we had a, an airport operations employee on that surface at the time the landing happened. We've had, I think in the last eight years, seven or eight wrong surface landings, between them lining up for one runway and landing on the wrong runway, or lining up on a runway and then landing on a taxiway. And we think that it could be a concern when Taxiway Charlie's done. Taxiway Charlie is the taxiway in between the commercial service runway that you can see on the bottom.
Is it this one?
That's Taxiway Charlie. Thank you. Yes.
Is this the roundabout?
That's the end-around, yes. So, Taxiway Charlie, in between those two runways, when it's done, will be 75 feet wide and nice and dark. The general aviation runway above it will be lighter because the pavement's older, and it will also be very light. So, when somebody approaches, you're going to have this really nice dark taxiway, and it could easily be confused for the runway. But again, some of these projects that are going to come up will address these safety issues. And this is the approach that Tucson International Airport did take as a safety approach for its future extension, and I think it will be successful for our community. In addition, if it is a safety project, the ranking for the funding is actually higher. So, we do believe that there's a significant safety benefit, as well as an efficiency benefit.
Mayor, may I ask a question real quick?
Sure. Councilwoman can't tell me.
Dr. Sabata, does this map reflect the extended runway?
Not yet.
Okay.
That'll be in a couple pictures.
Okay.
Thanks. So, here's an example of a second item that is on our airport layout plan. This is a large apron for aircraft parking isolation in the event of a security situation or for event parking, you know, in case a presidential candidate happens to come by and have an event at the airport. So, this, this area out here really, I think, is heavily needed because all of our ramp spaces on the airport are taken. And when you have large aircraft, particularly the U.S. Forest Service trying to operate with several sorties and large aircraft, it's really beneficial to have large aircraft apron and parking areas. So, again, this is a good example of the type of development that we need to consider as we move forward. Here is the map. Councilwoman can tell me that you had just mentioned. This is an example of the runway extension, and this just is on the major commercial service runway. This is, this particular diagram depicts approximately a 2,331-foot extension off the end of that runway. The study that was conducted indicated that we actually would best benefit from an 11,000-foot runway, which would be about 1,000 feet longer than what is depicted. However, I don't think that there is the will to actually extend it that far because of the, the cost. Right now, the plan is to extend it to 2,331. That's the hope. That's the desire. And if that's done, it's going to be somewhere between 66 and, with the escalation of costs, up to $75 million just for that extension, the 2,300.
May I, may I ask one more question?
Sure. Go ahead.
Mayor?
Councilwoman can't tell me.
So, I did attend several of the open houses at the airport, and I, you know, spoke to a lot of the people that were concerned about the extension. Did I, I think I understood that when the extension takes place, that because the airplanes will then be taking off further away from those communities, that the overflight will also be moved away from some of those communities?
Actually, that is a benefit. The way it's, it's shown right here on the map behind you, this is basically an aircraft that's taking off on runway three right. That's, that's a magnetic 030. That's the azimuth of the compass, and that's what that stands for when we say the number. So, they're taking off to the northeast in this picture. It's only about 20% that they take off this direction. So, when we extend the runway, when the training traffic goes to take off coming opposite direction, which is 80% of the time because of the winds, by the time they get over to the sensitive community, the housing, et cetera, at the end, we expect that it will, they'll be higher in the air. And so, therefore, there will be less noise that is heard on the ground as those aircraft fly over. Or in fact, the aircraft may actually turn before they get to the houses.
Can I, can I ask you just, let me just show you something?
Yep.
If they, if they're taking off from here now, they're going to come out and go here. But if they're pushed back to the end of the yellow, could they be potentially coming out, you know, and turning before they get to the community?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Usually, general aviation aircraft only need 2,000 to 3,000 feet in order to get elevated or get off the ground. So, yeah, that, that is a benefit of this. There are other benefits. And of course, the general aviation parallel has its own pattern and its own community overflight.
Thank you.
So, people have asked me, how long will this take? Well, we've been in the process for a while. Right now, it looks like the soonest that we're going to be able to move from what is current right now. Right now, we're doing the benefit-cost analysis, a major drainage study, which the FAA just received a draft of and loves it, and also, much more planning that needs to be done. So, that's underway right now. We're looking at environmental, an environmental study of some sort that meets National Environmental Protection Act or NEPA requirements. That'll happen hopefully in '25. Design in '26, and we're looking at construction in '27 and '28. Could it happen faster? Possibly. Could it happen slower? Possibly. It really depends. I think the environmental is really the biggest piece. So, here's the Airport Enterprise Fund Operations summary. Basically, we have revenue of $2.9 million approximately, expenditures of $3.2 million. Where we've got, where we're projecting that we're going to go up a bit is in legal expenses and temporary salaries. We don't have any new positions that are being proposed. Our net projected deficit is $350,000. The good news is that we have methods of covering the shortage. The safe lease is already incorporated into the revenue that is calculated on the previous slide. We do also, do though, have an Area A that is currently being used at full use by Embry-Riddle and paying full rate, and an Area B reserved for future development that at any point they could kick in. That would be another $15,000 to $20,000 in annual revenue. There'll be advertising opportunities in the new terminal building that can generate some new revenue. And rental car revenues continue to increase. It's 10% of the sales, meaning the rental car sales, is generated back to the airport, so it's a great revenue generator. And it had a little bit of a downturn during COVID, but it's bounced back. We also actively sought CPI adjustments, including an 8% CPI increase for hangar rentals. And as leases come up for reassignment or for assignment or renewal, we are trying to be really market rate-oriented to assure that we're getting maximum revenue from those leaseholds. That's not always that popular. And in some cases, we've had leases that go back a couple of decades and are in the single digits, like 8, 9 cents per square foot per year. So, you will have a hangar that's worth $400,000 or $500,000 sitting on a piece of land that the city leases for about $100 to $120 a month. It's barely enough to cover any sort of weed control or maintenance. So, we need to try to move those leases into, into the current market rate environment whenever that, such is possible.
Dr. Sabata?
Yes.
Sorry, I was asking Mayor, but he's out.
I can recognize you still coming. Go ahead.
May I? Dr. Sabata, I got a phone call from one of the pilots out there not too long ago, and I don't, he's not from here. I actually kind of knew who he was from Phoenix, but he has a home up here, and he flies up here. And he left me a message on my phone here at the office. He said, what's up with the eight-year backlog for hangars? So, if there's that much of a demand for hangars, should the city consider getting into the hangar business? I don't know. I mean, eight-year backlog? That's quite a bit. Is that true?
Actually, to clarify, the eight years is for large hangars, and it's an approximation. If a whole bunch of people turn them in, it could be two years. But right now, that's what it's averaging for our largest. And there's a very small quantity of those. So, naturally, when you're dealing with lesser quantities, you know, turnover is sort of affected differently. The smaller hangars have about a two-year turnover. And actually, we've worked actively to get rid of some of the derelict aircraft. Unfortunately, people get a hangar, and it, it's like an old friend. They don't want to let it go. And so, we've had some real success. And I want to thank Representative of the Prescott Airport Users Group, who's actually here, as well as our Airport Advisory Committee, as we've sought to try to make sure that the aircraft inside the hangars are, you know, operational. And if not, then we help them with programs to help them transition and let those go back into really active use, because people really want those. Now, part of the reason that the city's not looking at getting in the, the construction of hangars is because right now, we have a, about a 68,000-square-foot facility in Monarch that is due to be expanded in the very near future. And so, as a result, we aren't going to try to go into competition with a private sector entity who already has a significant commitment to $4 million in hangar development, so that the city's hangars become basically in competition with that, with that.
Well, that's a good idea. But what does a hangar cost a month if somebody wanted to rent that?
Well, they, they run about 40 cents a square foot.
Oh, they do?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Approximately.
Good information.
Approximately.
Thank you.
The good news is, we also have some CHRISA and ARPA grants. We received several of them. They're airport-specific. They cannot be used for another city expenditure. And we have, we are able to cover that estimated shortage of $350,732 with that CHRISA grant to offset our operating costs. So, that's really great. We do have 1.32, 392 million available in CHRISA and ARPA funds, and we have until April of 2025 to spend those. So, as we have maybe another couple of years where we're trying to make some operating, go ahead.
Dr. Sabata, in the ongoing debt ceiling negotiations, they're talking about clawing back unused COVID monies. And I guess they haven't talked about ARPA specifically, but have you heard anything in that?
Yeah. So, we pulled out the money, and we're taking draws on it. Once it's pulled out and you take draws on it, you preserve the right to keep your cash. So, it's really important you do those draws. Otherwise, there have been, there has been talk about people losing their funding. Now, I suppose Congress could say, well, whatever you have in draw. I mean, Congress could do whatever Congress wants. But I'm very hopeful that past practice will prevail and that the act of us taking that money on a regular basis and showing that we're using the funds in an expeditious, reasonably expeditious way is, is acceptable to the FAA.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good question. So, another thing that's not on here is that every time we do a construction project that is FAA-funded, we are permitted to recover up to 5% of the cost of that grant as sponsor administrative costs. So, we track our time. We can bill it to the grant. Generally, finance doesn't permit us to sort of project that into the budget as an offset, so that's just a goodie hanging out there. Any questions on the shortage? Okay. So, this is the Airport Capital Plan. These are the items that are not directly right now in line for a grant. It doesn't mean that we might not find a grant for some of these, but right now, they're not in line for a grant on our Airport Capital Improvement Program. This fiscal year, we're proposing a city, it is a city-funded contribution of $775,000 approximately in change in maintenance on the airport. Under our grant assurances, we are required to properly operate and maintain the airport. Even though some pavement maintenance is provided by the Arizona Department of Transportation under their pavement management system, so we do get some direct maintenance done that we don't pay for, we still have some maintenance obligations. And it's chiefly the pavement, over 120 lane miles of pavement that we have out there at the airport. There's also the bottleneck hangar complex improvements. This includes a SWIP-compliant wash rack. That stands for Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan. It means that we properly follow the Clean Water Act and make sure that our discharges are appropriate, and the, there is no SWIP-compliant wash rack out there. This will also do double duty to also provide utilities out to the edge of the safe complex, which, as you know, was written into the agenda memo as an obligation of the city to provide utilities to the edge of the safe complex. So, it accomplishes that as well. There is 20,000 up there for Airport Master Lock and Badging System. This one can get tricky. Now, as you know, next week is the closure date for the Essential Air Service Program bids. It is possible, and I have heard that it may even be probable, that one or more of the carriers may request an extension. Generally, that's not for more than two weeks, but it'll give you an idea that somewhere in the very near future, we're going to have bids. If any of those bids are for aircraft that are more than 61 seats, we must up our security plan a level. And if we do that, there will be extra costs associated with the issuance of badges, the background security check requirement that, it's called the CHRC, which is the Criminal History Records Checks that will have to be done. One tenant alone, one of the flight training institution, may be in the several hundreds, if not close to 1,000 badges. So somewhere in there, all those, all those flight training programs may, may need badges to be generated. Right now, we use proximity cards. But if we have to go up in, in security level, they will actually be badges issued to individuals. That amount, unfortunately, we cannot predict that because we don't know what the bids are yet for the essential air service contracts. So stay tuned. And we'll be getting Katie that information as soon as it rolls in. And then we'll be meeting with the Airport Advisory Committee and doing some analysis. And we'll be back to you for what will ultimately be a selection, hopefully, of multiple bidders, one of multiple bidders. Now, there's several other things on here that are further out. And unless you want me to go into detail, I'll just say briefly. There's the T-hanger taxi lanes to allow additional access into the bottleneck and the ramp expansion that I had shown you pictures of earlier. The vehicle replacements include two replacement pickup trucks and a replacement tractor. There's also a tractor and flail mowing system, a new one that we'll need, particularly if we do do some land acquisition. We may have additional areas we'll need to trim. There's a fuel system that's aging, and it's a shared system. And we need to replace that. It's a vehicle fuel system that's coming up. And then also a landslide expansion in the event that we need additional parking, and eventually, a clubhouse drive extension study. So these are airport capital plan items, again, that don't have grants projected right now. Before I leave this slide, any questions? Okay, next. This is the airport layout plan. Mayor, good that you had mentioned. This one, I think it looks like it was approved in July of 2022. And so this is the plan where you must be on this plan if you're seeking some type of federal support before they will actually give you the grant. It has to show up on your airport layout plan. Go ahead.
Counselor Moore.
On that airport layout plan, you said it was completed in '22?
That was the most recent update.
So how frequently do you need to do it?
If you're really moving like we are, you can end up doing it annually or every 18 months. Yeah.
Okay.
It's, it, we have a lot going on here. Okay. So now, this is the airport capital plan, and that's what's going on. This is actually where we anticipate that there's a grant associated. Take a look at the column for FY 2024. Look at all the airport grant-funded projects. It's extraordinary. If we go down the line, land acquisition, taxiway delta rehabilitation. Now, I'd like to point out, when you were at, at regular session on Tuesday, you had heard that there was $20 million in additional money that was allocated to ADOT for state, for, for, for the airports in the state. To clarify, I think your question, Mayor Good, was, is that all airports or was that Prescott? The answer is 13% of that grant is ours. That means $2.6 million for the taxiway delta reconstruction right there and also for the taxiway echo rehab design. So we have one design.
That's not a request, that's actually allocated?
So what it was is the State Transportation Board makes the list in January. And based on the money that they had before that 20 million, we were below the line of funding. And the moment that the 20 million was allocated, we are now above the line. So it is approved for funding.
Okay, so you can actually budget for that then?
That actually is in here. It is in here.
Go ahead, Derek.
Okay. So the neat part is more money's rolling in, which is fabulous. So you can see there's additional many other runway taxiway projects that are going through. Some are design, some are construction. In particular, I'll draw your attention to runway three right, two one left extension. You can see there's 455,000. This is continued planning, environmental planning drainage study. In FY '25, there's the environmental study that we're expecting. That would be an environmental assessment or possibly an environmental impact statement. In 2026, we're looking at 4 million for design. And in '27 and '28, we're looking at a split of the 66 million into two different years. Now, it'll end up being a different scenario this is being projected out here because usually with a really big project like the runway, you'll be working with them for some sort of a agreement on a plan for the money to roll out over a certain period of time. And so we'll be discussing that in more detail in the future. So you can see many, many projects, all the way down to, we did apply for another grant for ultra-low lead avgas and ramp run-up bypass area. So that's a completely separate supplemental grant that relates to environmental things. And we also have a donation for the Ernest A. Love statue. That's $80,000 that came from the Arizona Community Foundation. That will be coming through. And we should see Ernie out in front of the airport later this year. So that'll be a really, really special unveiling. So in FY '24, we're looking over $10 million, $10.9 million. And over the course of the next several years, we're looking at around $116 million. So if we take the 51 million that we've already received since 2018, we go the whole 10 years and we start to look at it. Just to give you an idea, we have a approximately a quarter billion dollars, that's B, quarter billion dollars in investment in this airport over a decade that has either already occurred or is planned to occur at this rapidly growing, really amazing facility. That includes federal and state grants, ADOT-funded maintenance, private investment, a new air traffic control tower, and a decade of essential air service funded support to support our air carrier service until we can get that runway long enough that we can stand on our own two feet.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure. Counselwoman can't tell me.
Thank you. You know, Rob, and I was a member of the Friends of the Prescott Airport. We called ourselves FOPA. And this was way back, long before you, probably about a year before you, actually. And I remember there were a little, a lot of stakeholders sitting in the meeting. And we were talking about our little tiny, we were over at Susie's Skyway, okay? Our little, you know, what do you call it, terminal? And what, what could we, you know, envision? And how could we do that? And I remember former Chancellor Frank Ayers walking in the room one day and overheard us. And he said, I think I might have an idea for you. And we could have never, ever, ever done what you've done here. It's amazing. So I just wanted, my hat's off to you because I was there in the beginning. And now, these few years later, where we've come with that terminal and this amount of money is truly amazing. And to think of all the years we left that on the table because we just didn't have somebody that, you know, had your, your background and your knowledge. So thanks for doing that. And again, part of the, I remember part of the FAA rules before you came on was we had to craft a reuse of the original historic building, which I did for the group. And I had mentioned that maybe someday it could be a museum because it's a protected building. So just a little sideline. I just can't believe where we are today. But thanks again. Thanks for everything, all your knowledge and your connections. I appreciate it.
It's been my privilege. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional, do we have any public comment on any of these issues?
No, Mayor, we do not. Pardon me? All right. Go ahead, Mr. Hammer.
Mayor and Counsel, thank you. I'm not sure whether you'd like me to comment on the entire proceedings or was it just the airport?
Well, if you want to do the entire proceedings in three minutes, go ahead.
I'll do that in three minutes. Thank you. It becomes very, very apparent that you guys have a very difficult job at this point. The Council is looking at aging infrastructure. And I think we've seen that on the Fire Department especially. And that's meeting increased operating costs, increased operating costs of over 11 and a half percent, a very big number and obviously fueled by inflation, et cetera. I was astonished, though, that there's only one of the presentations today that is really focused in on cost reduction. In times of inflation, every top enterprise would have a continuous improvement program in terms of cost reduction. And I would urge you as a Counsel to think about cost reduction, how much we can take out. For an example, major oil companies will take out 2% to 4% of fixed costs per year. And I would entreat us to consider that because otherwise, the tax increases for our citizens over and above their inflation load are going to be very significant. The Fire Department presentation was, was extremely good and follows on with the strategic plan. And more than that, it shows us what business processes can do in order to run businesses and business departments. The business process and the metrics associated with it are very, very key. And if we go and look down in the valley, we see people using business processes to run cities very efficiently. We need to take a look at that as to whether it's not something we should do as well. And finally, you know, we have an aging population with income under pressure from inflation. Some of our capital, which we have online here, is going to play towards increased taxation. What we have in the budget, as we'll see in a couple of minutes with Mark's presentation, is an offset on capital being reduced with operating costs going up very significantly. Now, that may be a choice you want to make. But in the face of aging infrastructure, it's not obvious that you should make that choice. So those are my comments in terms of where people are. I think people on staff have done an amazing job in terms of putting things together. But please look at business processes.
Thank you, Mr. Hammer.
We have another citizen that would like to speak. If you, Daryl Ostermiller?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Airport Director, City Staff, Budget Professionals. I'm Daryl Ostermiller. I'm an Airport Advisory Committee member. Michael Getty, our Chairman, has submitted a letter that you should all, should all get as far as the Aviation Advisory Committee's opinion on the airport budget. And you should have that in your file. So I'm here today. And instead of Michael, he's on the ACAR. Let's see, ACAR.
ACAR Trust Board.
Yeah, he's Chairman of the ACAR Trust Board today. So he can't be here. So I'm taking over his, his, his spot. Okay. Since Director Sabata has been here, we've been, remarkable growth and development at the airport, including introduction of daily nonstop jet service to both Denver and Los Angeles with dozens of connecting flights beyond, construction of a new 18,600-square-foot passenger terminal, replacing an aging 1940s terminal that could no longer meet the airline's needs to an increased demand from the traffic public. Provision of air service to more than 200,000 total passengers. We have benefited from more than $17.4 million in recent US DOT support to ensure essential air service to Prescott and offset serious constraints in our runway length and high elevation. Support for the air system access for the Prescott Fire Center tanker base to provide essential aerial firefighting services to our community and the region. General aviation from 230,000 annual operations to more than 300,000 operations today. As six education institutions seek to train the nation's future pilots during a serious global pilot shortage. Infusion of more than 50 million in federal and state funding for necessary airport design and construction. Economic development on and within the local airpark and industrial and commercial areas resulting in remarkable private investment, job creation, and more than $190 million in community economic benefit. And laudable efforts to assign with the goals and strategies of multiple long-established community planning documents, including Airport Specific Area Plan, the Land Use Plan, and the 2015 Voter General Plan. We support this proposed fiscal year '24 budget as well as the airport's proposed five-year capital plan. We are pleased that the airport is finally being supported and recognized as the regional resource and economic generator that we have planned and hoped for for decades. It is no accident that this extraordinary period of airport and airport area growth and development parallels the tenure of Dr. Sabata in her time as an Airport Director. We stand firmly behind her as she works with, with you, our city leadership, to tirelessly promote and protect this community asset and the community. And as she seeks necessary state and federal support needed to implement our future plans. What you have in front of you is an airport budget that supports economic development goals, long-established community planning documents, job creation, sales tax revenue generation, and continued access to the national air transport system for our citizens. Short, it supports the potential future success of our airport, North Prescott, and entire region. There is only one commercial service airport in Yavapai County and one in, one of the handful of commercial service airports in northern Arizona. And it is here, in our city. We are incredibly fortunate. There are cities in this state and region with no airport and an underfunded, or an underfunded airport. They can only dream of the economic potential that we are beginning to realize at and around Prescott Regional Airport. Prescott Regional Airport, Ernest A. Love Field, has always had a potential for this jewel in the rough. But now that asset is becoming polished and is finally returning the benefits promised following years of investment and protection. It is shining, shining more brightly than our predecessors could ever have imagined, far beyond when it was established as a remote county airstrip nearly 100 years ago. We are proud of the airport's extraordinary evolution. We support this budget as an investment that will help ensure the continue, continuation of the evolution. Thanks for your continued support.
Thank you, Daryl. I appreciate that. And I've also followed the development of the airport over the last six, seven, eight years, part of the Friends of the Airport Group as well. And to see the evolution and the expansion and the, I think the reliability of this commercial airport service for all of northern Arizona, even more so now that even Flagstaff's airport operations have been reduced. And we've monitored a number of essential airport activities throughout the country that have been terminated or reduced. And the fact that we still have ongoing support and funding from the Department of Transportation, the FAA, and the State of Arizona aviation allocations just indicates how far we've come and how important it is that we continue this development so that our future is going to be assured, not only for airport operations, but also the economic activity that will be generated around the airport in high-tech, more high-paying jobs that will pay off for decades to come. So thank you for your efforts on the Airport Advisory Committee. And we'll continue to support the growth of the airport in this effective way.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mayor Protem or Counselman Tenney? Mayor Protem or Councilman Tenney?
No.
Good, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, just to...
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor, just to kind of wrap up here. The updated proposed total budget, we had a total budget the first day, but as we've gone through this, things have changed. We've had to increase it for some possibility of doing the land thing with Glassford Hill for our partners and then being repaid and various other adjustments that have happened. So just wanted to give you what the total budget that you will be seeing on the 13th of June as a tentative budget Eight percent down, a lot of that down is because of the capital as well as the fact that PSPRS tax is no longer there. We did have an increase in operating grants, as we've talked about, tied to new positions, tied to maintenance of the market-based compensation program, as well as increased costs for fuel and other energy products are all going up significantly. And that's a lot what we do when you pump water and treat water. It's a lot of power, it's a lot of other energy as well with gas and pains. So with that, that's the number. This is the remaining schedule. On the 13th, we'll be bringing the tentative budget back to council. If approved by council, that'll be published twice in the newspaper. The summary schedule of it will be. The public hearing would be on the 27th. There'll be three things in that public hearing. The final budget, alternative expenditure limitation under our home rule option, as well as the property tax levy will be part of that public hearing. As part of the truth in taxation process following that public hearing, council will have to take a roll call vote to either authorize us to proceed with the property tax increase or to not. And then from there, the final budget will be considered at a separate special meeting per state law. For some strange reason, they have that in the code. Still don't get that. And then, obviously, we will bring back the property tax levy. Has to be two weeks after the public hearing. That's why that roll call vote doesn't authorize the property tax levy. It just authorizes us to proceed. The 11th will be the actual adoption of the fiscal '24 property tax levy. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions. We have a lot of the department heads are here. If you have any burning questions you didn't get answered in this glorious two days of budget workshops.
Councilman Tenney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mark, I appreciate the great summary of this scintillating two days of budget discussions we've had. We had a concerned citizen that brought up some good questions about the budget going up and taxation potentially going up. Just to confirm, we're actually looking at a projected lower budget for this upcoming fiscal year than we've been...
In total, and again, as noted again by Mr. Hammer, was a lot of that is just capital fluctuates from one year to the next, and it's fluctuating down in this year.
And overall, we're looking at $20 million and change less. And will you remind us once again of the property tax levy that we're looking into? What the total amount for a typical home in Prescott would be? The last time that that property tax...
I'm going to see if I can get IT to bring up my slides from the budget workshop on whatever two weeks ago was. Was that the 11th? Can you bring up the slides from that? Please, anybody in there? Yes, hey, it's changing.
Looks like they're working on it, that's great.
We're so excited.
So I just needed a reminder for myself.
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
For the public as well, that we're not looking at, you know, a massive blowout of taxes for...
Definitely a good point.
For people who cashed out from California and moved here.
And again, we could, you know, I can bring back all sorts of comparison for property tax. As I look at properties that are in the city compared to properties that are in PV, our tax rate's about half of what those properties are.
Substantially lower in many respects.
Substantially.
Based on school, based on fire protection.
Right.
Our sales taxes are lower, et cetera.
Yeah. How are we coming in there, IT?
So I'm with citizens who suggest that they don't want to see increased taxes. I don't wake up in the morning and think, man, I'd like to pay higher taxes. But it is true that we pay less than most everybody in the area for services that are much greater than everybody in the area. We are an efficiently-run operation and, at least in my opinion, look at a small increase in a small portion of our funding that hasn't gone up in years is perhaps warranted.
Yeah, well, we'll do it from memory. I believe it's the increase is about $263,000 in the general fund that would represent our property tax rate going from... Oh, oh, look at this, so exciting. We could go through all these again if you'd like. They're all very good.
I know you'd like to.
I withdraw my question.
There's your sales tax thing, but property taxes, again, is comparison 101 to, you know, $1,100 out in anywhere that's not Prescott around here, basically, 10 times. And that's what I was talking about. If you look at your property, if you go to the property tax site, Yavapai County, you look at your lot, they have a pie chart option. And you'll see that about 4% of your levy is Prescott. If you live in PV or you want to look up somebody's land out in PV, you'll see that about 20-something, 25, 27% of their levy is their fire district. It's big numbers. Here are the numbers. It says 288, it's actually not. It's, these are, we had a, yeah, it's about 283,000 is the actual increase, not the 288. It is a 14% increase. Ends up being about $3 more on a $100,000 house, which is what, never going to figure this out, which is what is required to be disclosed in this truth in taxation notice, which will be in the public. It's going from 21.95 to 25.2 for a $100,000 house. And you just multiply that, obviously.
Sure.
Did I hit all the...
You did, you did, yeah. And you mentioned earlier, of course, the mythical $100,000 house doesn't exist, so.
Well, again, it's the required statutory publishing from the state.
Great. So, yeah, absolutely, just to reiterate, though I absolutely share the concern that I don't want to see taxes go up. It seems both the amount and the reasoning for it is entirely reasonable.
It is what you need to do if you want to keep adding police officers and the fire personnel and other things that we have talked about this year.
I don't want to be the kind of guy who gets up in the morning, complains about potholes and, you know, response times from first responders, et cetera, and at the same time says, by the way, don't raise my taxes.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of piggyback on what Councilman Tenney is saying. So the summary I'm seeing from you, Mark, says that our overall budget operation is going down. And I get some of that's just capital fluctuation, but still, it's a negative number, is what I'm seeing. We are raising the property tax. The number that sticks out in my mind from day one was that we kind of settled on, say, $13 and $13.52.
$13.20.
$13.20, that it's actually going up.
$400,000 home.
For a $400,000 home, which is closer to what a median home value is in the city limits. What I'm curious, if you could go back to those slides, one more, yeah, this one here. This is the slide that I think is probably the one that I always look at when we do these presentations in my mind. When you look at what the property tax, the sales tax that we're paying in this community is significantly lower than Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, communities that don't provide fire service through their municipalities, communities that don't provide airports, communities that don't, in the case of Prescott Valley, provide waste service, communities that don't have the significant obligation of providing water as a utility. And I will say that while this number is lower now, it was, by my recollection, I could be wrong here, and you'll tell me if I am, I'm sure, Mark, but even when we were paying down our PSPRS debt at an additional 3/4% tax, it was still lower than these other two communities, is my recollection. I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah, it's right there on the chart, on the little gray on the end is what it was.
Okay, so effectively, what I'm hearing is that even though we are increasing property taxes by about $13 per $400,000 home in the community, effectively, the way that funds this city most significantly, sales tax, in the last two years that I've been on this council, has gone down pretty dramatically. Is that accurate?
Yes, obviously, with elimination points.
I'm here with Councilman Tenney, like, this is a pretty efficient machine that we're kind of just overseeing. So I just want to say, I appreciate the hard work that all the staff put into presenting this budget. And I'll say that I have, in my interactions with the city staff here, have found them to be doing more with less consistently. And I just, I appreciate that. I'm happy to see that we are in a position, because we have been fiscally responsible for the past few years in paying down our PSPRS debt, that we're able to say to our fire chief, our police chief, you guys do essential, critical work in our community that people count on. And we do not want you to continue to do so on a burnout and demoralizing level where you're putting your critical people in danger. Let's give them a little bit more allowance to do the really important work this municipality depends on. So I don't love raising taxes either. It makes me squeamish, but, man, I just, we have been operating at the bone for so long that I'm glad that we're able to, when the fire chief comes up here and says, I need six more people, when the police chief comes up here and says, I need five more people. And I would note that the police chief needed more people than that, but that's kind of what we settled on. I think it's good tough. So thanks, just for all of you department heads out there in the audience, thank you for your hard work. It's appreciated, we know you're doing the best you can. Thanks.
Councilwoman Kent, tell me.
Thank you, Mayor. Hey, Mark, two questions real quick, or actually, one statement and a question. So on a $1 million house, I think I did the calculations, and it was $31 on a $1 million house, roughly.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. So then my other question was, after watching the airport presentation, could we be actively seeking more, are we leaving anything on the table in terms of grants? Could we, what is, I know we talked about it, you and I initially, about a grant writer. But are we leaving some money on the table? Could we be actively seeking more grants for our city in every department, do you think?
And, you know, we looked at, thank you, Councilwoman, we've looked at that, we've looked at a professional grant writer. We had a contract with a grant-writing firm to try that. Didn't work all that great. They really want you to know what grant you want before you go to them. You know, there aren't too many magical employees you can buy who are, not buy, but hire, who know where all these grants are. We do quite a bit of grant work. You know, we do get a lot of grants. Are you leaving some on the table, missing something that you might possibly be able to get? Possibly, I don't know how you'd ever get them all. I, with my experience working with other communities like Flag and some of the valley cities that do have grant writers, they don't generate a lot of additional grants. They help with a lot of paperwork, they help coordinate the paperwork for the grants. So I don't think we're leaving a ton of money on the table. You know, I'd love to say, oh, if we had a grant writer, we'd be able to fund the big Chino with a grant. But that's not going to happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I just want to reinforce and support what Councilman Tenney and Councilman Montoya said about this small increase in raises and about the amazing employees we have. Even this morning, I attended the breakfast for the Public Works Department. And I'm just in awe of our employees. We are very blessed as citizens that live in a community where we enjoy such a high quality of life. Yesterday, I attended the fence dedication at the Peavine Trailhead for the new fence that was done in partnership and collaboration with our city, with the Granite Dells Foundation. And, you know, you look at the quality of life we have. In our home, we sleep with the doors open at night, you know, we're safe. It's a peaceful community. We have a wonderful quality of life, we have great goods and services. And I'm just very appreciative of living in this community and serving this community and for those who serve our community. And I think this minor, small tax increase is long overdue.
Well, I'll also say that I hear frequently from the community that they expect more and expanded and more effective service delivery. But it doesn't come free. I mean, I have a crystal ball on my desk in my office, and my magic wand has still been backordered for a couple of years here. So in order to provide those services, we need to have the revenues to be able to do it. And I think when we look at this budget, and we can see that each and every department is trying to upgrade their facilities, their vehicles, their equipment, their staffing. And we're delivering better police protection, more traffic enforcement. When we call 911, we want to make sure the response time for our fire and paramedics is as rapid as can be sustained. And when somebody needs 911 service, they want those people there in minutes, not eight or nine or 10 or 11 minutes when their life or their safety is at risk. We want better road conditions, we want those potholes fixed quickly. We experience the challenges of dealing with winter storms. And we've certainly had our share of them this year. Snow removal, people want those rapidly and well-done. We want our trash service picked up. And even my neighborhood, I was out walking, and the trash truck came by, and a couple of items fell off the trash collection unit. And the driver stopped, went out there, picked it up, and made sure it was complete. You just don't see that anywhere else. So water quality, making sure our water is safe, contaminants are reduced far below EPA standards. All of those services is what people expect. And the fact that we can deliver a budget like this that actually is a little less than even we had last year, I think is quite remarkable. And I think the community at large does expect those services to continue to improve. And I think for most of them, when they look at the numbers on it, you know, $13 or $15 or maybe the $1 million homes at $30, I think everybody realizes that inflation is a reality. It's not transitory. It's going to continue to be a challenge. And we need to be able to continue to provide the services that go along with the challenges of an inflationary economy. And even we've heard from the department heads, you know, they have to place an order, they get approval for a project, and it may take a year before it even gets started. So those have to be planned for and budgeted. And I think when you look at the totality of our budgets, it's a pretty remarkable performance. And with that said, thank you very much for presenting this, Mark. Thank you for all the department heads and your proactive statements and plans. And we're going to continue to deliver for the citizens of Prescott.
Thank you.
So this meeting is adjourned.